... meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
The Pledge of Allegiance is repaid by the United States of America and the interior public, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, and the region of justice abroad.
And we remain standing tonight for a moment of silent reflection for Diane Jakic, a cleaner in the district from 1994 through 2016 who passed away on September 6, 2019. Thank you, everyone. So, we welcome you this evening to the beautiful Music Hall here at Lancaster, which we're very proud of, and as we usher in another school year, onto greater things for our district. Our first 4.0 is Presentations, and we'll start with 4.1, and I'd like Dr. Valli to introduce this next presentation, if you would.
Yeah, thank you. So, the NISMA Presidential Citation Award is presented to a NISMA member district that acts as a model for music education programs in New York State. The district must provide a well-rounded music program at all levels. Strong consideration will be given to participation outside the school and programs that actively participate in NISMA. I think that it's the most prestigious award a district music program can receive in New York State. And about a year ago, Mr. De Angelis, or maybe even two years ago, Mr. De Angelis started the application process. It was about 200 pages of written work, all kinds of things that he had to do to just even apply. And so, I asked Mr. De Angelis to come and give us, in the Board of Education, an update on the status of our application. Mr. De Angelis?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Valli, and of course, the entire Board of Education Administration. Yes, Dr. Valli is correct. We began the application process about a year and a half ago, and then last year, it was one of our department goals, together with the unveiling of the new art standards. We thought, okay, let's us 20 music teachers come together, and we basically worked all year long to submit the 206-page application, and I got a call from the President of NISMA last week saying that we are the recipients of the Presidential Citation Awards. So, thank you. Thank you. A few of our music teachers are here today. Can you guys just...
So, wait for the record, just so you know. Like, we had planned and rehearsed that.
We rehearsed?
I set you up to go, "And we got it!" You know, like the Toyota commercial where you jump and leap and whatever, but nice job, Dan.
Okay. We got it! We got it! We got it. Thank you. So, just like to recognize a few of our music teachers of the 20 in our department. Jake Seymour, Ally Metcalf, Angela Marino, Shannon Zelnowski, Ken Kowalski. Did I miss any of the music teachers? Richard Goss is out in the field with the marching band getting ready for Hawaii. So, just wanted to say, from the bottom of my hearts, truly, thank you. It was...oh, did I miss somebody? Oh, Lynn Ruda, I'm sorry, Lynn Ruda. Anybody else? It's...yeah, I wrote some essays and I mailed the application, but it truly was a team effort. We worked on it all year long, all the music teachers did, and it wouldn't be even close to being possible if it wasn't for the unending support that we get every year from administration and, of course, the Board of Education. So, thank you from the bottom of my hearts, and we're going to officially be awarded at the state conference on December 5 in Rochester with a special ceremony for us. And only 23 schools across the state have ever been given this honor, and it hasn't been awarded since 2016. It's something that you can only apply for once every seven years, and so Lancaster, there's such a well-rounded program, and we couldn't thank the community and the Board of Education Administration enough for what we accomplished. So, thank you again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, I've never seen a stronger music program, and it speaks to the expertise and the passion and the ability to teach of our music teachers and directors, and, of course, the students as well, because without the students, the music program would not be what it is. So, congratulations once again. 4.2 is our tenure certificate, Presentations, and we have several of those for this evening. So, I'll ask some of the heads of the department to come up and present their tenure presentations.
Okay, good after...good evening. Tonight, I am very happy to announce three different people who have been recommended for tenure in the elementary department. And the first is Kristen Fuqua. Kristen has proven herself to be a diligent and dedicated instructor. She puts her students first, is a team player, and a strong communicator. She's a member of the building planning team and the district safety team. She's an asset to the school literacy team, and her reading instruction is exemplary. She also strives to make learning fun, and every year, you can see her working with some of her colleagues to put on the first-grade play and to put on Living Wax Museum, allowing students to shine and share some of their amazing talents. Kristen is very deserving of this recognition this evening.
It is with great pleasure tonight that I introduce everyone to Mrs. Jamie Morrison. Jamie just got married this past summer, so her new name now is Jamie Engel. So, in conjunction with getting tenure, Jamie also got married. So, we're very proud and we're very happy that she's able to have a tenure recognition and get married all in the same year. So, congratulations. Jamie, or Mrs. Engel is a remarkable young woman who is being recognized tonight for receiving tenure in the area of foreign language. Mrs. Engel has been in the district now for the past four years and has shared her passion and enthusiasm for French with the students of Lancaster and the community as a whole. She is a tremendous asset to the foreign language program and to the community as a whole. As I've gotten to know Mrs. Engel, she demonstrates incredible qualities that make her a phenomenal educator. She's a team player and a leader who puts students as her primary focus. Mrs. Engel is always looking to challenge herself to further her craft, both in and out of the classroom. So, let's think about that for a second. Focus in challenging herself and challenging to better her craft. Mrs. Engel works diligently to find ways to expand her own skill set while advancing the learning of her students and colleagues. She serves as the Secretary to the Board of Directors for the Western New York Foreign Language Educators Council. She's an adjunct professor of foreign language at Buffalo State College and is a member of the American Association Teachers of French, and I could do this for the next 20 minutes, but I won't. Outside of academics, she can be found chaperoning the Lancaster Middle School Ski Club, school dances, and is an active participant in the Middle School Character Education Committee. She truly does bleed red and black, and I look forward to participating in future projects and initiatives for years to come. Our mantra here at Lancaster is always to hire the best, and Mrs. Engel is a great example of that. She's not just a great teacher, but she's a great person. Congratulations, Jamie.
All right, our next teacher that we would like to recognize is Stephanie Devaney, who works in the Library Media Center at Williams Street, and she understands that the library can't exist in a vacuum and works closely with all the content area teachers. One of her main goals has been to help the teachers better understand how the library can enhance their instructional goals for all of our students. She's been instrumental in bringing the STEM initiative into the library and to help with the redesign of the library area at Williams Street. We're so happy about her prospects of being a tenured member of our family here in Lancaster. The third of the elementary teachers that we'd like to recognize tonight is Christiana Keller. She is an excellent example of teachers who are collaboratively with their department. That collaboration has resulted in better lessons for our students and a stronger vision for the program up in PE. She has created informational handouts for parents in an effort to build home and school connections. She has also well-planned and understands the importance of essential questions, instructional outcomes, and rubrics across the curriculum. She's taken advantage of all of the professional development that we have here in Lancaster and is the coach of the Lancaster High School tennis team. We're thrilled that she has been recommended for tenure.
I was told to pare my comments down to only one or two pages, so I'll make that attempt here, but Mr. Crazmy had brought this up. Dr. Valli does advise us to hire the best, and I know when he talks to the new teachers upon hiring, he always tells them to take care of our kids, too. So, I want to tell you, the next three professionals I'm going to talk about have done that and then some. They are the best. They're the absolute best, and they certainly have taken care of our kids and just...I won't even be able to do it justice here in just a couple of minutes because they're phenomenal. But I will...I'll start out and say that I've also had a chance to see them all in action and seen them work with children, giving speech therapy or providing lessons, and there's no doubt that they are incredible special educators. So, with that said, as a group, I'll start with Katie Borch. Katie persevered with us, doing part-time work and interim work, and we're so...I'm so glad she did because she has developed into one of our finest teachers. She is incredibly organized, calm, a superb teacher. I just like going in her classroom. I just feel...when I get in there, I just feel like relaxed and comfortable. I love going in there. I don't get in there enough, but when I get in there, I enjoy just that time I get in there. This is huge. Again, I could go on and on, but this one, just one, I guess, one big point I want to make, and I've heard this from our colleagues. She understands students so well that might struggle socially and emotionally, and they even...I don't know, I hope she knows this, but sometimes they even call her the Whisperer, right? I think I might have heard that from you, Amy, I'm not sure. But she just...that means she just gets kids, right? She listens, she understands, and because of that, they do well. So, Katie, come on down. Okay, Shaylin McCabe. Yeah, sure, you can come down anytime you want. Shaylin is a speech-language therapist here for the district and has worked at Sholi and other buildings. I think this year she's at...the last couple of years, she's been at Sholi and Court Street. And in a very short time...four years, right? I got to count. Yeah, four years. She's become just like an incredibly consummate professional. I mean, we knew, as I mentioned, she had great potential coming in, but just to see the development in four years as a speech therapist is just amazing. She is always prepared to discuss children's progress, their levels, their needs. Sounds like an IEP, doesn't it? Kind of, yeah? But it's true. I'm not just saying that. She gets the kids, and what is amazing, I think, or maybe sometimes I think we take it for granted in my area, is that at meetings with parents and other staff, she just explains herself so well that parents and other staff get it, right? Because some of what I think speech therapists do is pretty technical, but she brings it down to a level, and I know parents understand, staff understand, and when I've seen her, again, and I've seen her in action with the children, I know, and I know from the data that they're making progress, and that is incredible. She's constantly seeking out training and further staff development to improve her skills as a therapist, and then I think this is just, in terms of her being highly effective as a colleague, just the epitome of collegial work with everybody that I've ever come in contact with, you and other people that I've talked to. So, with all her facets of this kind of a complex role as a speech therapist, she's exceptional. So, congratulations. And Alex Pawalowski. For this team of three tenured professionals, Alex is, not of that team, but in general, Alex is like the first to offer and to help and to volunteer to meet student needs. Just incredible. Like, she's helped me out countless times with summer programs. I don't even know how many things she's helped me out with, but that's one of them. And just helping out in her building, she's become a huge asset and, again, developed in the past four years at Court Street into just a wonderfully effective teacher. I mentioned this before, I've seen her in action, right, teaching. Her kids are learning, okay? I know, maybe that's somewhat obvious, but...or should be accepted, but I've seen her, I've observed her, and trust me, in those lessons and what I've heard, those kids are learning, and she's developed into an especially good reading teacher, which is one of my areas that I always look at. So, in that regard, she's a self-starter. She's organized, she's highly effective in working with kids, and I guess one of the really, really strong points among many is she works with parents well. I mean, that's maybe an understatement, but she seeks them out, she's not afraid to pick up the phone, call them, understand where they're coming from, and if there's issues or anything she has to work out with her students' parents, she does it. And you don't...you certainly don't have to remind her. She's probably done it already. So, she's...I guess I would just say, finally, she's...and along with that, she's a great, great advocate for her children, so...or for students. So, in all those areas and more, congratulations.
So, actually, if we could...I'm sorry to make you get up again, but if we could ask each of the tenured teachers to come up for a group photo, we'd like to have that for posterity. Okay. So, again, congratulations to our newly-tenured teachers. It's very nice to hear about each of them and to see each of them here, and the smiles on their faces, very proud and happy to be part of that picture. That was pretty cool. So, we'll move on to 4.3, our elementary summer school program with Mrs. Colleen Schaefer.
Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Colleen Schaefer. I'm the principal of the elementary summer school program, and it's loading. It's been on all night, you've seen it, so...anyway, this is my intern. This is Andrea Parker. She comes to us from Sweet Home Elementary, and she has been the administrative intern all summer long. She has helped me out, as you know. Our program is in two buildings. We are in Hillview and we are in Williams Street School. This summer, I wanted to show you, but I just have to tell you. Of course, we are one of the very first presentations here, so we got to work up the kinks for you, right? Well, that's okay. You want to help Mr. Santoro? This summer, we had almost 70 students. I'm just going to shut this off. How's that? Oh, no, no. There we go. We have a great audience. They're going to get a lot of use out of this room, aren't they? Okay. So, our program, we had almost 70 students. We had incoming kindergartners all the way up through sixth grade. We get our students mostly through teacher requests, but we do have parent requests and a lot of students through kindergarten screening. This year, we had 11 teachers, so the student-teacher ratio was very small, and it was outstanding. If you look at us by grade level, we had a big chunk of students at our Williams Street level. And over the last few years, if you have been following me over the last few years, our attendance rate was about...it was hovering over 90%. We have really improved at our K through 3 level, and we think it is because of our small student-teacher ratio. We also had an outstanding project-based program, which I want to talk to you about. That really helped boost our attendance rate. You see, project-based learning, for those that you don't know, really helps students get engaged. They have projects that they...or questions that they have on their mind, and they work through these questions. They have...because of all of this exciting, motivating...our theme was, last year it was full steam ahead, so we twisted it a little bit, and it is Innovation Station, so it was very exciting. It just really provided a positive attitude towards school. It really helped to embed social studies and science, so students who come into our program, they get a jump start on the curriculum, and they really get to build their schema for the next year. They enhance their research skills, and, of course, they use technology. Here are some of the pictures at Williams Street School. Kids working on their projects. Pictures speak a thousand words, of course. And at Hillview, the Jump Start Program. That was our rocket launch. Now, I want to have Ms. Parker talk to you about our Color Wars program, our incentive.
So, this summer, we wanted to have a focus on literacy and math, and one way that we challenged students to engage in reading outside of summer school was we posed a Color Wars challenge with them. Each grade level was assigned a color, and every...we started off giving each student one bookmark. Each bookmark had four different places that we wanted them to read: under a tree, under a blanket, with a friend, in the bathtub. And when they were reading in each of those spots, they got to color in the bookmark. As they brought the bookmark back, we hung a star on the Color Wars chart, and they received a little token. Students were picking up bookmarks, little toys, and then we started off thinking we would just give them one bookmark, but then they kept asking for more, and it actually...it turned out to be a huge success. We had 140 bookmarks turned in in total. As you can see, second grade dominated the competition, and what's interesting is they were the smallest class in the summer school with only six students. So, they really took this challenge to heart, and they really turned in a lot of reading time, and they earned some Frosties gift certificates for their hard work and dedication with this program. And then this year, for our field trip, we were able to visit the brand-new Ralph C. Wilson Explore More Museum downtown Buffalo. What was great was we got some funding through Explore More. They had a Title I grant that allowed us to get free busing from one of our schools, so Lancaster only had to provide busing from one building. They also opened the museum 30 minutes early for us, so we got to come in before any of the public was there, and we really got to dive into each of the learning centers. Kids got to dress up as doctors, play with Legos, they got to ride bicycles to make walls laid up, and most importantly, they got to dress up as their favorite Buffalo sports players. So, it was a really great morning that we got to spend at the museum. The kids were inspired and really linked up well with our Innovation Station theme for the year.
And as you know, we have a huge end-of-the-summer project celebration. We do have some of our Genius Hour projects linked on here, so I wanted to show you some of them. So, they picked the projects... So they picked the projects that they wanted to study and research. That's what made it so exciting. They had several inquiries that they had to, they had to really move through in order to finish their projects. And you can see, they picked several different medias. This is a media, they did it on a poster. Amanda, she did a PowerPoint. Ford did the difference between electric and gas cars, so that was just a stand-up. Alex wanted to learn more about phones. Ava and Maria made a song. These are just a few pieces, a few projects that we wanted to highlight, but unbelievable. Why You Shouldn't Smoke. And Logan and Carlos made a Roblox Monopoly. So throughout the summer, these were their final projects, while mixing in social studies, science, math, and of course, ELA. This really was a huge, huge success. All the parents were able to attend, and we really had just a great celebration, didn't So last but not least, we definitely wanna thank Dr. Vallalee, the Lancaster Board of Education. We need to thank Mrs. Marchioli, Dr. Kufel, Mrs. Ziegler. We wanna thank Mrs. Moller and Jackie Bull at our school, just for really being supportive and helping us with all of the little day-to-day minutia. The district office and building secretaries, and of course, the building cleaners and the custodians. We really had a great summer, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much for a very nice presentation. It's great to see students and teachers engaging and learning, especially in the summertime when it's very difficult to do. We'll move on to 4.4. We're gonna take a short building tour led by one of our partners, Jo Armini, and our principal, Caesar Marchioli. Those of you that would like to join us on the tour, please, you're welcome to join us. We'll return shortly thereafter and move on with our agenda. Before I continue, I would just like to take a moment to wish a happy birthday to one of our very good friends, who turns 50 today, and that's none other than our own Dr. Michael Vallalee.
We should've said happy birthday before the pledge.
Speech, speech, speech. We should have, yes, yes, but I forgot, so, sorry about that, but yeah. I know he would like more people here to recognize his presence. Okay, so 5.0 correspondence, does anyone from the board have any correspondence they'd like to speak on? 6.0, approval of minutes, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 26, 2019? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 7.0 items from staff organizations, anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Mrs. Adamek? So if we could just, we wanna get this on the record, so I'll ask them that we grab the microphone, and we could pass it around if we could? Thank you.
I'm not even sure how to convey our thanks and gratitude for everything that you've done for our school district as a whole. Speaking from the administrator's standpoint, holy cow. It's amazing. It's amazing, and we're in awe of it. So we have the Lancaster community to thank, we have all of you to thank, we have our district office people to thank, we have all the teachers that were involved in the planning process to thank, administrators, whoever's involved, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's amazing. Look at this place. We're in awe of it. So we need you to know how very excited we are about this. Again, it's hard to thank everybody, but we do have to, we have to say something about our custodians. I know they're gonna talk about it too, because if you were here on Friday afternoon before school started, you would not believe what you saw on Tuesday morning. We were blown away. So a huge thank you for everybody that has touched the projects that have made Lancaster state-of-the-art. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Adamek. And Lancaster Central Teachers Association.
So we talked beforehand and worked this out, so that I could really, really, really thank the custodial staff throughout the district for everything that they did for every building, but especially up here at the high school. I know the teachers at the high school were displaced those two days we had, but we did the best to welcome them at Williams Street, and they were wonderful to have with us. But especially the custodial staff that chipped in to get the high school ready to rock for all of our teachers up here. We would also just like to congratulate all of our teachers receiving tenure tonight. I know they all went home to their families, 'cause they're very young. And we wish them a great year ahead, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. Moving on to board reports. 8.0, board reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to report upon? Okay, hearing none. I'll just mention that we had our annual board retreat this last, this past weekend, and we take this time to talk about the future, recognize the past, and just collaborate as a board, who we all have, and I think something we all have in common, is we believe in this school district and those who work here and the students here. So we're very excited about what we've accomplished as a board and what we look forward to accomplishing in the future. And then lastly, just an observation, I, my daughter is on the varsity volleyball team, so I've been coming to sporting events for quite some time, and I noticed the last couple home contests, we have athletes who come from other sports, from football, from soccer, from lacrosse, and support the girls in the volleyball program. And then vice versa. And we have modified volleyball players coming to support. And then vice versa happened today. The varsity girls went down and watched the modified team. And they engage, they have fun with it, they support one another, and I just think that's so much cooler than I was in high school. I just think, if I could go back, I would act like that. I would engage, I would support, I would accept, and I would just appreciate the time that they have here. So many students spend most of their day here and go home late at night, and, but they just live that process. So, you know, for as much as young people take a knock for being on their phone a lot and, you know, playing video games, there's a lot of good things happening with young people, and especially here at Lancaster, because the culture is so rich and inviting, and they're a huge part of that. So I envy you, I thank you very much, and I'm just very, as always, happy and proud to be a small part of this school district. So thank you very much. 9.0, superintendent's administrative report, Dr. Vallalee.
I'll make this quick. We've thanked a lot of people here. I just wanna thank one individual, one more individual, and then one group. The individual is Jamie Phillips. Jamie is the financial brain behind these capital projects, and I'd like to thank her and appreciate the fact that she is maximizing aid to make sure that our promise, my promise as superintendent and this board's promise, that it is a 0% tax impact on local taxpayers for Lancaster in these projects comes true. And that is a lot of hard work, and a lot of planning, and a lot of paperwork, but she does an absolutely fantastic job. And then probably most importantly, to former and this Board of Education, who has guts since 2012, they've passed, gone out with, and now done half, been, done half-construction of $146 million worth of capital construction. So we have completed half of that, and we have another $77 million to go in the next five years, and look forward to doing that and more good things to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Vallalee. 10.0, old business, anyone from the Board of any old business they'd like to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Educations report?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Educations report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.2, is policy adoption 7220, graduation options, early graduation accelerated programs, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. The next four are second policy readings for 7511, immunization of students, 5681 school safety plans, 5620 fixed asset inventories accounting and tracking, and 5662 meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming. Those are for information only and will be voted on at a future meeting. 12.1 is a revised AIA contract with Watts Architectural and Engineering, could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.8 is a contract with Veronica Grande. It's a tutoring service. Could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.9 is a contract with Cleveland Hill School District, could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.10 is a contract with the Town of Lancaster, and this spells out that the use of our pools, fields, facilities, we share those with the town free of charge, because that's good for kids, and we have a very good relationship with the town, so I'd like to thank them for that cooperative balance, and could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.11 is authorization to carry firearms, per a change in legislation. We now need to approve all those carrying firearms on our campuses, and that mostly is for law enforcement, those who have the, by license and by training. So that list has been proffered for your approval. Could I have a motion to accept that authorization?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.12 are the construction change orders, could I have a motion to accept those change orders?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.13, could I have a motion to accept the surplus equipment report?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is a contract with Erie One Bocce, is a Title II contract, and that's a cooperative effort for professional developments with St. Mary's and other parochial schools. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. And 12.15 is a memorandum of understanding with the Town of Lancaster regarding school resource officers. By law, we have a memorandum of understanding stating the duties of our SRO officers. Could I have a motion to accept that MOU?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 13.0 is our public hearing, where we hear from the public. We have no one signed up to speak for this evening. 14.0 is our executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session to hear the Lancaster Central Teachers Association grievance regarding a teacher transfer?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. So with that, this effectively ends the public portion of our meeting for this evening. Our next meeting will be October 7, 2017, at Williams Street School at 7 p.m. We thank you for coming, everyone.